Great. Good evening. We will call this meeting of the Milton Select Board to order at 7:03. And we'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, to which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we'll move on to item number three, that's public comment. And we are fortunate enough to have Senator Timulty with us this evening. And if he could be promoted first, I'll just go over the directions for people to be included in public comments. So if you can move your mouse to the bottom center of the screen, you'll see that there's an icon that says raise hand, and so then you can raise your hand. And our moderator will let us know that you've raised your hand. And if you're using the phone, you can press star nine. And then when you're recognized by name or the digits of your telephone number, if you're not identified by name, then you can press star six to toggle on and off for the mute. But if we could start first with the Senator, we'd appreciate that.
Okay, Madam Chair, the Senator has been unmuted.
Excellent. Hello, Senator Timulty. Thank you for joining us.
Madam Chair, good evening to you and through you, to the members of the board and to Town Administrator Dennehy and Mike Lynch. Thank you very much. Just a quick legislative update, if I may. And thank you very much for the support of this board on this important issue to likely the youth of our town, specifically the Yulin hockey rink. As many of you recall, back in May of 2019, for the FY20 budget, I filed an amendment, and the amendment was adopted after I debated on the floor of the State Senate. And truthfully, there wasn't much debate, but certainly spoke on its behalf and convinced my members to support it. $500,000 were directed by way of my amendment to renovate and refurbish Yulin Rink. And specifically within the earmark, I mandated that the first dollars were to be spent on the erection of a women's locker room with full accommodations, which of course is long overdue. Recently, an estimate came in during the, obviously, the throes of the COVID-19 pandemic, which of course is still upon us as a Commonwealth and as a nation. The estimate was for $605,000. And after some great collaboration with Commissioner Montgomery, and of course, great work by Town Administrator Mike Dennehy and Select Board Member Mike Zulis. Commissioner Montgomery, who I must, I can't say enough positive about Commissioner Montgomery, will contribute monies from DCR Rink operating budgets. And the project in the end, of course, will be $605,000 with $500,000 from the earmark that I created a year ago and $105,000, as I just mentioned, from DCR. The contract has been signed with the contractors, and the contractors will commence work on Yulin Rink at the end of this week or early next week. And the work crews will work from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. until Labor Day. After Labor Day, they will work from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And substantially, the project will be completed by October 25th, with final closeout work done by November 25th. So the project should be finished by November 25th. And I believe this is great news for the youth of this town and of the region, as Yulin Rink is used by many communities, chiefly the town of Milton. And I believe it'll be ready to go by late November at the latest. And as Commissioner Montgomery said, substantially done by October 25th.
Wow. Thank you very much, Senator. That is excellent news. And we very much appreciate Commissioner Montgomery's efforts and our own Mike Zulis and Mike Dennehy. That is excellent news. And I know that all the families who participate in that are going to be thrilled.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may add something?
Yes, please.
Well, thank you very much. And over the weekend, we had a great discussion. And Mr. Zulis, thank you very much, and Mr. Dennehy. We addressed an IT bond bill in the State Senate chambers last week. Many members, due to the tweaking of our rules, chose to participate remotely. I was actually at the State House and debated in the chamber and, of course, voted in the chamber accordingly. But the IT bond bill, through an amendment I filed, I secured $62,500 for the town of Milton to spend as it wishes on IT with our supplemental budget, which is a $1.1 billion document. As many of us are aware, we have yet to take up our General Appropriations Act, quite simply because we do not have a stable consensus revenue number. So we filed a supplemental budget for $1.1 billion COVID-19 related. We believe the federal government will reimburse us for these monies. I took it as an opportunity to file an amendment to secure $27,000 for our Substance Use Disorder Coalition in town. The amendment was adopted in concert with myself and my colleagues, of course, voting for it. And it will send $27,000 to our Substance Use Disorder Coalition, which, under the leadership of Caroline and Consella and Laurie Stillman, does wonderful work for all of us. Usually, in the General Appropriations Act, I file an amendment seeking $30,000 for our coalition. Again, we haven't had that opportunity yet. We are hopeful that we will in the coming months. But I took this as an opportunity with a fiscal vehicle to direct monies towards our coalition. I also filed an amendment, which was successfully adopted, to secure $25,000 for the town of Milton in cash for COVID-19 expenses for the town to dispense these monies as it wishes. And of course, in every situation that I just delineated, no strings attached. I believe this board does wonderful work, working for the people, the citizens of Milton. And Town Administrator does great work, I believe. And of course, Caroline Consella and Laurie Stillman as well do great work. And I'm a big believer in putting the monies and the resources in the hands of the folks like yourselves who are on the front lines doing the people's work for us. So thank you very much and happy to answer any questions.
Oh, thank you so much, Senator. Does anyone on the board have any questions or wish to say something? Yes, Mr. Zulis?
Thank you, Senator, for that. And thank you for all of the appropriations. One of them, on the IT appropriation, and that is, that is no strings attached. We could try to use that in any way to upgrade IT facilities or to look at new options for IT initiatives?
Yes. It's for the town to spend as it wishes, Mr. Zulis. But I have great confidence in the discretion of this board and Mr. Dennehy. And whatever you folks determine to be the best use of the monies for the town, please, by all means, you will be free to do so with the monies. Of course, given that it's a bond bill, our bond bills are unique to the rest of the country. Once it is signed into law by Governor Baker, after a conference committee with the House, and I'm confident it will survive. The governor then has to authorize each and every bond item with a signature. But you're wearing the game now, and I can be very persuasive, so we'll keep working at it. But it is there, and again, I have great confidence in what this board does and the decisions and Mr. Dennehy, your leadership of the town collectively, so.
And thank you, Senator. And the Town Administrator may have an idea, and certainly the IT department. As you know, we've been looking into municipal broadband over the last year and a half. I'm not sure if this is something that we can put towards that, but I suppose that's something we can look at going forward.
Just want to, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Doyle.
I just wanted to add my thanks as well. And particularly at this time, where we're going to be, in our likelihood, increasingly dependent upon technology as a substitute for our conventional meeting opportunities, communications, and so on down the line. So kudos to you on the timing.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Senator Timulty. We always appreciate your efforts. Any money coming from the state is always welcome news, so thank you very much.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And to Select Board Member Doyle and Select Board Member Conlon, thank you very much. We've had numerous discussions in the past years, both Mr. Doyle and Ms. Conlon, about Yulin Rink and the importance to the children of the town. So thank you for your support. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you, Senator, for joining us. We know that your time is very, very valuable, and there's not a lot of it, given all you have to do. So we really do appreciate it when you take the time to reach out and when residents can hear from you.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your advocacy for the rink. You've been very supportive of my efforts in the past couple of years, so thank you.
Well, it's a wonderful amenity that serves not only us, but our neighboring towns, too. So it's quite an important asset and something that we really want to take good care of for the Commonwealth.
It's a wonderful public recreational asset that I am determined to maintain as a public recreational asset. And thank you. This board's been a wonderful supporter of that premise, so thank you.
Thank you, Senator. And best of health as you continue your work on our behalf.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and health and happiness to everybody in the town. And thank you so much to this great board and Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think the Town Administrator was trying to make a point.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Oh, no worries. No, thank you, Vice Chair Conlon. Thank you, Madam Chair. No, timing is everything, so it's a warm and humid day in greater Boston. But the Milton Youth Hockey Team assignments came out today. So a lot of hockey families will be very happy to hear the Senator's news today. Additionally, if you remember this board, we got a state grant for ClearGov, which is the transparent financial software application on the town's website. Due to COVID-19 and some of the cuts that we were probably going to have to make in FY21, ClearGov didn't quite make the cut. Ironically, the Senator called this morning with the good news about the IT. At a conference call with ClearGov this afternoon, and we're going to carry forward through fiscal year '21. Thank you, Senator, for finding these funds. And the timing was perfect for both the Yulin Rink news today and all of your funding sources from the State House. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for the collaboration.
And I would like to reiterate what the Senator said about Commissioner Montgomery and all of our state partners. Commissioner Montgomery has really gone above and beyond. I've always said he owns everything from Pittsfield to Provincetown. He owns beaches, he owns hockey rinks, he owns ski resorts, he owns roads. But they always find a way through our state-elected Senator Timley to get us those funds. So we really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. And thank you all for this opportunity to speak to you directly, into the citizens of the town directly. Thank you.
Of course, Senator. Anytime.
Thank you, and everybody have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Right. So, looking at the attendees list, does anyone wish to speak before we close public comment? No, seeing none. Okay. We will move on to item four. That's COVID-19 update. Mr. Dennehy, do you have anything you'd like to start with?
No, not particularly. Just status quo in Town Hall and many of the town buildings. I do want to thank all of our department heads for trying to do more with less, if you will. Christine Stanton has been very busy over at the Council on Aging. So several groups of our seniors on their Wednesday morning walk. They also hosted their third consecutive coffee hour over there outside, practicing social distancing. I don't have an update from the Health Director, but I think based on what the state is telling us consistently, Massachusetts seems to be doing the right thing. We have a pretty good supply of PPE. And Bill Ritchie and his group at Consolidated Facilities are continuing to make all of our town buildings ready for reopening. We're actively waiting for the governor's guidance on when Town Hall and other town buildings should and can be safely opened. I know the library opened on Monday. Will Adamcheck, the director, told me they had about 100 visitors. Obviously, I think it could be 15, no more than 15 people in the building at one time, but it was very well received. So thank you to Will and all of our library employees who went back and opened the doors to the public. It's a tremendous asset for our town.
Excellent. Thank you. And I will just reiterate to please wear masks when you cannot social distance. And as Mr. Dennehy said, Massachusetts has been doing the right thing, but it's each individual person who can do that, so. And just to remind people that the Health Department does continue to publish daily updates on the town website. There's information on COVID-19 and its symptoms, testing sites, and other resources for people who may need assistance with housing, food, utility expenses. And there are some social assistance programs listed there. But you can also call our office if you need extra help, and we will find someone to help you with what you need. Thank you. Do any other members have anything to add to the COVID-19 update? Okay, thank you. So moving on to item number five, there's an update on Milton Fire Department from our Town Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I want to formally welcome Chris Madden as the new Fire Chief in Milton. And on Monday, July 13th, the town will host a relatively low-key, but formal and socially-distanced ceremony to swear in the new Milton Fire Department Chief, Chris Madden. It's going to take place at 6:00 p.m. in the Council on Aging. So we're trying to observe social distancing again and other COVID-19-related safety measures. And all those in attendance will be asked to wear a mask and properly social distance. But I want to formally welcome Chris as the Fire Chief. And we'll do it formally on Monday. During that ceremony, we will also promote David Staunton to Lieutenant to take Chris's vacated seat as Lieutenant on the Milton Fire Department. So that'll take place Monday evening over at the Council on Aging.
Thank you. So moving on to item number six. We have a letter of response to mass housing on the submitted revisions to the proposed residences at East Milton Project. And so originally, the letter deadline was today. But it came to our attention that the plans had not been looked at by the planning board. And so we actually were able to get an extension to next week, the 15th. It's not clear what happened, but even though there seemed to be time for them to post that to their agenda, it didn't get posted properly. However, they have worked through Allison Quinn, the assistant planner. And I understand that they won't have additional comments. However, the Affordable Housing Trust hadn't looked at the plans either, and Judy Barrett asked about them, just looking at them. Of course, they won't have anything to say about the plans, just about the affordable housing component. So I'm not sure what addition there might be to this letter, if anything. So it could be that we approve it substantially or completely this evening, subject to any revisions that Judy Barrett, our consultant, has, and then we can sign it. Or you may wish to meet again in order to look at any revisions and then vote. It's really, it's the will of the board. So at the moment, I'll open the floor for discussions about the letter, if we like, or if you want to just discuss how we'd like to proceed, either one. Oh, you can speak. I can hear you. I can hear you.
I can't see from my hand raise function.
It's down at the bottom on the panel section on the right. It says raise hand.
Yeah, no, it's not there. Maybe there for participants.
You don't see it?
Yeah, maybe there for...
Well...
Usually there...
You're frozen.
What? Oh, I'm frozen? Am I... Can you hear me now?
I think Melinda's frozen. Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
You were frozen just for a moment in time there, Melinda.
All right. Well, listen, I'll find my hand raise function.
For now, I can see you. You can just wave.
All right. So two things, one on process and the other on... And first, on the letter, I see that the focus on the letter is on the appropriateness of the conceptual design. There were two things that were pointed out last week by Mr. Coyle and others that I wonder if we shouldn't at least mention in the letter. And one is the water runoff issue, which was mentioned by Mr. Coyle and I think one, perhaps two other participants. And the second was the fire safety issue. And I just wonder if those are things that we might want to reference in the letter.
So they're not referenced well enough?
Oh, I didn't see them. I'm sorry?
In the second paragraph from the top.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you mean where they mentioned, we mentioned stormwater management.
Right, right, general.
Yeah, I mean, I just wonder whether we want to make some specific comment on that. So those are two thoughts. And again, I haven't sent it in to Judy, so I think the question is whether she thinks it would be helpful or appropriate. So there's two things in the letter. And then on process, I guess I would prefer to have a meeting to sign off on the final letter. And it could be a short meeting. And I wonder if, since it is due on the 15th, you know, we've met before and sent the letter in in the evening when we had the time. But I just wonder if it's better to do it the day before, the day or two before, rather than to meet on the evening of the 15th and then send it in later in the evening of the 15th. I just, I think it may be better to do that. So those are my thoughts, both on timing and substance. And I will now search for my raise hand.
For your raise hand. Well, I have to say, I thought perhaps if this, since this would likely be a relatively quick meeting and perhaps just this single item, we could perhaps do it in the morning, because I know next week, Monday and Tuesday, both have some meetings and events going on. We have the Master Plan Implementation Committee on Tuesday, and I have housing on Monday, right after. However, you could meet without me, but that's not ideal, so.
Maybe in the morning on Wednesday. I think that would be, I mean, whatever morning. But the morning on Wednesday, we're working from a timing perspective to make sure we get the letter in on time.
How do other members feel about meeting in the morning on Wednesday?
I can do that, or I wonder if we, you know, if we wanted to do Tuesday eating, if we could do just an hour before the, or a half hour, it won't take that long, even before the MPIC meeting. I don't know how many of our board will be attending the MPIC meeting. I know we're posting for it, but Wednesday morning is fine, too, for me.
Well, but it has the added benefit of if we're already doing things that evening, then you could have Wednesday morning. Could people do it at 6:30 then? Yes?
Yeah, we're at 7:00, so.
Right. Would 6:30 be enough time, I think? Okay. Arthur, is 6:30 on Tuesday?
I think I can do it, and then go to conservation at 7:00.
Okay.
Assuming.
I did know at the conservation, I forgot about that, but I did see that, yes. And you will be there.
That would be fine.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Doyle.
If I may, follow up on Mr. Zulis's comments. To help guide as much as possible the response of mass housing to Milton, any way in which we can reinforce, express the human safety element associated with the proposed development would be extremely important, at least from my perspective, as it is for many of the people in the neighborhood and elsewhere in the town.
May I ask a clarifying question of you and Mr. Doyle and you, Mr. Zulis? When we're talking about reinforcing that and using specifics, is it with an aim to try to have the project proponent work to resolve those before they put in a formal application with the zoning board of appeals? Yes, Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Okay. If that's the intent, which I think that we need to... I know it is said in here, however, I think that it, to make that specific point, okay.
And I think, just to elaborate on what Arthur said, I think to wrap in the human safety with the fire safety, I think that might work quite well.
Right. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I just had some minor comments. Let me just state what they are. In the first paragraph, the second sentence, actually, the rest of the paragraph, about the fact that the July 4th holiday weekend occurred and it was abbreviated comment period. I think now that we have the one-week extension, I'm not sure that really makes sense, because it sounds like we're going to be getting comments from anyone who is an interested party. So I think taking out the section that references the abbreviated comment period would make sense. Further down on page one, in the second bullet point, right now, the question is, "How can increasing the supply of multifamily housing help Milton make progress?" I'd like to say, "Make further progress toward being the equitable, diverse place it seeks to be." I'd like to say something along the lines of, "It already is and seeks to expand." Because, you know, I think it's important that we recognize that we are a pretty diverse community already, and we've made a fair amount of progress, at least in terms of equity and diversity. The issue about affordable housing, we're only at 5% on our SHI. We have other, small letter A, affordable housing in town, and we certainly are a diverse community. So I think we want to state right up front that we already are a diverse community. She can come up with the wording she'd like to change that to. But rather than it sounding like we're not there yet and we're starting, I'd like it to recognize that we've already made a lot of progress in that direction. And then on the last page, the second-to-last paragraph... And then on the last page, the second to last paragraph, I think we should just confirm with the planning board, there's a sentence that says the planning board will be expanding the East Milton Working Group to encourage more participation. That was already in process, and I don't know if new members have already been added, but I think we should just check whether will be expanding.
Right.
Is correct, or whether we've, whether that's already been done.
I, I did actually send this to April Anderson to check on the correctness of everything that was written in that paragraph. But I, I'll, I'll make sure that I understood that, that she was in agreement with that.
Yeah, my reasoning is that she says that the COVID-19 has hampered our progress on the East Milton planning, which it has, but we're a few months into COVID now. And, and I know that that's already been starting to pick up again. So I think we should just not let them think that we're just putting this off, but that we actually have picked it back up. And if, if, if additional members have been appointed, we could at least state that.
Yes, I.
Minor points, but things that I think are worth.
Speaking with Cheryl Togias, who actually is here, I, I thought that they had not finished appointments yet, but, but I'll, I'll go back and double check. But, but I did, as I said, I did send this to April because I just. I, I just wanted to make sure that was all correct. But, okay. And she, she didn't come back with anything. But thank you, everyone, for those comments. And I, I will pass them on. And you can also feel free to forward them to Judy if you're, if you have specific language you would like. So I, I will, I will do that. And you can always follow up with additional. And then we have our meeting. So thank you, I, I do appreciate everybody's attention to this and trying to get it just right. Excellent. Okay, so we're on to item number seven, and that's the discussion approval of the Master Plan Implementation Committee expenditure on the town civic center project. And Ms. Conlon, I, I don't know if you'd like to give us background on, on this? Okay.
Sure, unless that's what Cheryl was joining us for, but I'm happy to. So as I mentioned at our last meeting, the Master Plan Implementation Committee is currently, it has been for several months, although we had a brief pause during COVID, has been working on the town civic center area, which is the area around the town hall, the library, the COA, the fire headquarters building. And we already have an existing contract in place with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Josh Fiala from MAPC has been doing some design work for us, has had meetings with abutters and neighbors and interested parties, as well as a meeting with students, mainly middle and high school students, who gave us some comments on what they'd like to see in the area. And at our meeting in March, three designs were presented by MAPC to the committee and by about a half dozen neighborhood residents. Based on some comments that were made at that meeting, the, the Master Plan Implementation Committee would like to expand the work that MAPC is doing to make some revisions to the designs, come back to us with two designs, which is the purpose of our meeting on July fourteenth. And the fire station building committee has already committed $2,000 to the project because landscape and parking around the fire station are areas that are of interest to them. So they have funded, they've committed to funding $2,000. The implementation committee was looking to fund a small amount from our fiscal year 21 budget. We're just starting fiscal 21. And we're asking for up to $2,500. The committee didn't specifically come up with this amount, with the committee authorized, Cheryl and Allison, Cheryl Togias is the chair of the implementation committee, Allison Quinn and myself to meet with MAPC and Dan Clark of the Fire Station Building Committee and talk with Josh about what amount might be needed to finish the work. And based on that call that we had last week, we came up with the amount of $2,500 that the MPIC could spend out of its budget to bring this project to fruition. So that's what we're seeking. We have to get approval as an implementation committee, we need to get approval from both this board and the planning board in order to spend the amount that Tom meeting approved for us for FY21. So we're seeking just an up to author, 2,500 authorization. And the draft of the contract is amendment number one, it would extend the time for performance of the work until December 31st, but we think it will be done long before then. And it, it adds a total of $4,500 to the existing price to be paid under the contract as a cap.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the board?
If, if not, I'm happy to, to make the motion, then I'll move, I think we should move to approve amendment number one to the contract for professional services between the town, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and the request of the Master Plan Implementation Committee to spend up to $2,500 for professional services relating to the town civic center project with a, with a total cap of $4,500 for the additional services.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Zulus, you are muted.
Here I am. The only thing, and this isn't really related to this, is, is that the fire base, I didn't know the fire station building committee had, had money that it could just spend. And I'd know that there had been money appropriated to that committee that they could decide to spend on, you know, on certain things, but, but that's not really related to this motion, that's something.
Yeah, my understanding is it's the balance of an authorization that they had. And I don't know if they've encumbered it from FY, I assume they've encumbered it from FY20. I don't, we didn't, I don't have the details on that. We'd have to check with the Fire Station Building Committee, but, but they've indicated that they've, that they have those resources available to commit to this. And I think they've already voted to commit it to this project. Or at least Dan Clark was authorized to speak on their behalf and committed to this project. So I'm not sure what formalities they've undertaken at that committee.
Yeah, no, it's just a question of what, what was appropriated to them and for what purpose. It would have to fall within the purpose for which it was appropriated to them, that's all. But again, it's not related to this.
Yeah, well, I, I did think that they had money appropriated for some initial design.
Yeah, I believe it's the balance of that, that.
That, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Excellent. So all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Item number eight. Eighth Amendment of the Discovery Schoolhouse lease. So the, the board, while it's working on an RFP for the Kidder Building, has decided that we would like to keep the, the Discovery Schoolhouse in there. They've been actually providing childcare for essential workers during the pandemic. And they've recently been able to go back to hosting their, their programs and have been really hard at work making sure that they can provide that service for, for families. So are there any comments or questions on the draft of the Eighth Amendment to the Discovery Schoolhouse lease? Yeah? I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
I will move to approve and sign the Eighth Amendment to the lease between, am I muted? No. To approve and sign the Eighth Amendment to the lease between the town of Milton and the Discovery Schoolhouse to be executed for the period July 1st, 2020 through June, June 30th, 2021.
Second. All those, or any discussion? No, all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Collins, yes. Excellent. So, so we will, Mr. Dennehy, are we to make appointments to come in and sign this? I, I know that we had to do that for something else recently.
We'll print it and we can put it on the counter and people can come in and sign it at their convenience. And thank you to each and every one of you that came in last Thursday, Friday, over the weekend, or even today. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see, so item number nine, approval Max Ullin Skating Rink lease committee charge. And actually, then we'll be looking at a slate. So would you like to address this, or shall I?
Sure, I, I can handle it, Madam Chair. So this, this is a refocused charge of the Max Ullin Skating Rink Committee. It's going to be a smaller group. The last group included seven people. I think we talked about the makeup of this group. It's going to be one-year term. So on, on the heels of the DCR extending the town potentially a, a three-year permit to operate the rink, this committee would consist of five members, each of one year, myself, a member of the Board of Park Commissioners, the town planner, a resident, and one member of the select board, and I believe Member Wells volunteered last week. Basically, what this group is going to do, it's, it's going to take a, take a look at a multi-year permit from the DCR to operate, manage the rink. We have a wonderful partnership with Curry College over the past 11 years. We'll talk about things like a long-range capital improvement plan, pro forma cash flow analysis, establishment of a rate structure for ice time rental fees. This comes to the 46 skating rinks in the Commonwealth that DCR owns from them, but would like to establish a rate structure and recommend that to the DCR for further review. We'll basically make recommendations on how the rink will be managed and operated. And ultimately, because the town doesn't have the bandwidth to run the rink itself, put out a RFQ for a, a private entity to, to run the rink on a daily basis from Labor Day through early April, when the rink is in operation.
Thank you. I, I will, if no one has any objections, just read the committee charge into the record. Is that, that meet with everyone's? Okay. The committee shall draft a proposal for operation, maintenance, and management of the, the Max Ullin Skating Rink under a multi-year permit for the, from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. And the committee shall consist of five members, serving one-year renewable terms. Appointed by the select board as follows, the town administrator, a member of the Board of Park Commissioners, town planner, one resident, and one member from the select board. The committee's charges to draft the following for consideration by the select board. A proposal for a multi-year permit to operate and manage the rink, a long-range capital improvement plan, a long-range pro forma cash flow analysis, establishment of the rate structure for ice time rental fees and public skating fees, make recommendations on how the rink should be managed and operated, make recommendations on how the rink will be maintained. So I will entertain a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve an amended charge for the Max Ullin Skating Rink lease committee.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? On all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus? I, I see that you said yes, but you're muted.
You got to get, get the hang of it, yes.
Yes, excellent. So now we move on to item number 10, Max Ullin Skating Rink Lease Committee. I will be happy to entertain a motion.
Can I just, before we, before we move forward, I just want to make sure, I know, I know we had the discussion last week about committees. I, I was a little interested in, but, but Richard had, had expressed interest. I just want to make sure, does Richard know about the new charge? And I just want to make sure he's interested, you know, still has the interest with the new charge, or, you know, we should, you know, make sure of that before we go ahead and appoint.
That's a, that's a good question, Mr. Dennehy, yeah.
Yeah, we could, we could leave the select board seat vacated at this time. Again, we're still waiting for the permit to come from DCR. So I think, I don't think time is of the essence. Like most things in government, it's hurry up and wait, and then, you know, it becomes a fast-moving current. So when we do get the permit, it'll be a fast-moving current because we need to get a management team in place before Labor Day. So, but yeah, I, I think time is not of the essence right now, to name a member of this select board. And I'm not sure if Member Wells has, has thoroughly vetted the, the charge to the member of Zulus's point.
Okay, very well. Then we can put that on the July 22nd meeting. Thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate it. So I will then entertain somewhat different motion.
I'll, I, I'm not muted, good. I'll move to appoint Molly Notton of 150 Manhattan Avenue, Ted Carroll of 73 Clap Street, and Michael Dennehy of 525 Canton Avenue. And I guess, and should we hold off on the town planner?
Yeah, that would, that's another TBD, so, yeah.
So I'll, so I'll move to appoint, again, those three individuals to the Max Ullin Skating Rink Lease Committee through July 2021.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Excellent, thank you very much. Now we come to reappointment of our own Mr. Doyle to the Conservation Commission. And originally, we, we didn't realize that he needed a reappointment, but, Arthur, you can say more if you like, but this has been thoroughly vetted by town council, who has checked in with the, the state. And we can reappoint Arthur through the term of May 21. And there should be no conflict of interest, it is not a paid position. And so I'm, I'm thrilled that he's still willing to do this. They need him on Tuesday night, I've seen their docket, and they, they have quite, quite a lot going. Arthur, would you like to say something to this? I, I know you will recuse yourself on the vote, but, okay, excellent.
I will be happy to move that we reappoint Arthur Doyle of 85 Belcher Circle to the Conservation Commission to serve through May of 2021.
And, and I would, I would be thrilled to second that motion.
Excellent. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes.
Madam Chair, if I might, I know Chair John Cannon is ecstatic as well, that Arthur's going to continue to serve on that, so. Thank you, thank you, Member Doyle, Secretary Doyle.
I, I know, I know we moved on from Max Ullin, but I just want to say that I'm really grateful for everybody who's going to serve on, on that, it's such an important asset. Okay, so now we move on to the town administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Pretty, pretty briefly tonight, so I had a pretty lengthy meeting with the town clerk today. As many of you know, and many you may not know, Governor Baker signed a vote yesterday, a vote-by-mail bill into law, and Secretary of State Bill Galvin announced it. It's the first time in Massachusetts history that all eligible residents will have the opportunity to vote early and by mail in both the state primary and general election. This is going to be a large undertaking by the clerk and her staff. What with COVID-19 still looming, still relevant and still in our community. But the, we're, we're working through a plan on, on how to put this together. So if you can understand voting these days, we have vote-by-mail, we have early voting, we have absentee voting, and we have voting at the polls. And there are 10 locations in town. So a lot of work that needs to be done to get this ready. The early voting for the state primary will happen between Saturday, August 22nd and Friday, August 28th. And the in-person early voting for November general election will be held from October 17th to October 30th. So a lot of work to be done. The, the primary is the Tuesday of Labor Day. And I just want to support the clerk and her staff in any way, shape, or form, and just want the public to know that she's working on all four aspects of, of this year's very important elections, primaries and federal elections. And that's all I have for tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Yes, that, that was my, that was my big note of, of the, of the day as well. I do have a question. Does the clerk, will the clerk need additional poll staff? And is there, is there a way for, for her to recruit them, or?
So, so the numbers were, were surprisingly good for the town election. There was a bit of anxiety prior to that, but as always, the residents of Milton volunteer and step up, and she saw an amazing turnout that day. And I think that those that showed up at the polls saw the work that was involved in getting that day of election with, with the. with, with the plastic bags and the Sharpie markers and all that stuff, but she's always looking for more help, and I, I wouldn't push anyone away. You can call the clerk's office any day of the week, they're there, 617-898-48527, I'm sure the clerk will take your, your call and and be willing to accept your, your help, especially with, with this new dynamic coming very quickly in the fall.
Great, well, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Do any members have reports? Yes, Mr. Zulis?
I have two things, two things to mention. And one, I forgot to mention when we were talking about the, the the letter, the, the letter on the East Milton 40B. In the past, we have put the drafts up on the website, and I wonder and maybe we want to do that here, so people can take a look at it, so that's one thing I just forgot to mention before, so we, we might want to put that up since we, we have a, we have, we have a crack at it, and so we can get some input. So, that's that. And then, second, last week, this board charged a, 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 an advisory committee on equity and justice for all. And so for those who are interested in participating and becoming members of that committee, they should either submit volunteer applications through the town website, or contact Mr. Dennehy or any one of us by email if they're interested in serving on that committee, because we're, I'm hoping, and I think, I think the board wants to get it constituted, you know, sooner rather than later within the next few weeks. Those are my two thoughts.
Thank you, and, and thank you. We need to let people know that the draft will be out, so thank you for catching that. Does anyone else have a report? No?
I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle?
None, thank you.
Public comment response, well, I, I think we, we all expressed our, our gratitude to Senator Timolty, and as, as you said, Ms. Conlon, every dollar from the state is welcome, and we do appreciate it. Let's see, so confirm future meeting dates. So far, we, we have the 22nd, and then, of course, we have the town meeting on the 28th, and possibly the 30th. So I think we all hope that that wouldn't be necessary. Now, and we have our next meeting actually, which will be at 6:30 on Tuesday evening, the 14th, so that, that's what we have now, we we have a little time before we move into August. One thing that Ms. Conlon and I and we're talking about, and Mr. Dennehy, was the, the retreat and the possibility of having an extremely socially-distanced retreat, because it's very difficult to do this work, and I think especially as the board's reconstituted online, so it would be good to know, we don't have to know now, but if, if members would think about it, and of course, Mr. Wells is not here, so Mr. Dennehy perhaps could reach out to him, and, and maybe people could speak with Mr. Dennehy about their feeling about, if, if they think it can be done safely, and how that might be and those things. The other thing we talked about was having it on a weekday late afternoon, because we know that some members have some challenges on the weekend with childcare and, and other important things, so.
Thank you.
Yes. So, so, so those are, are our two thoughts. If people would, and I, I, I don't really think we can schedule it without Richard here, but if people would like to propose some dates to Mr. Dennehy, maybe we'd have something to work with then. Does that sound amenable? Okay. Any, any other comments or questions about Mr. Dennehy?
Could I thank Jen McCullough, who was pulled out of the bullpen this week, and Michael Lynch for his stalwart work in making our Zoom meeting and agenda happen this evening. Thank you both.
Yes, yes, thank, thank you, thank you, Jennifer. Worked with me on, on housing this week too, so it, it's been, it's been nice to, to touch base again in that way, but maybe more for us than for Jennifer, so thank you for mentioning that. Are there future agenda items that, that people would like to like to put on now for the 22nd or a future meeting? Yes, Mr. Zulis?
There is one thing, and, and I, I mentioned this briefly, either at the last meeting or the meeting before. The numbers are looking good on COVID-19, things are moving in the right direction. However, in connection with opening our businesses and opening our business districts, I, I think I'd like to have a discussion on whether it makes sense to designate those areas as mandatory mask zones. And again, I, my, my thought is not to impose any kind of penalty, or, but just to designate them as mandatory mask zones, so people may think twice when, when, when individuals are walking in those areas with open-air restaurants, it, it, it could lead to some connections. So anyway, that's, that's one thing I'd like to maybe have a discussion on the 22nd on that.
Thank you. Is there any others? Of course, at, at any time, if someone has an agenda item, please let Mr. Dennehy, and you can copy Hillary as well, or Jen, until Hillary gets back. Mr. Doyle?
Would that be a date to finalize the master plan committee appointment?
Yes, and that's actually already on there, so thank you.
You're ahead of me. I like that.
Yeah, no, well, I, I, it could have been on tonight, so I, I realize that now, but. Okay, well, very good. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes, faster than any meeting I ever, I ever ran as chair.
Well, I, I don't know about them. Yes, and thank you, everyone, and thank you for all those who attended the meeting, we really appreciate it.